Meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. I am Vice Chair Noah Levy, and I want to explain why we have an unusual first item on our agenda tonight, which is election of Planning Commission Chair pro tempore. That means temporary chair for one meeting. A quick explanation of why this is necessary. I became the acting chair of the commission at the last meeting, but due to longstanding plans, I needed to be out of the area for this meeting tonight and can only participate by Zoom. It did not seem feasible or a good idea to try to chair a live in-person meeting by Zoom. So speaking with Director Ford, we came up with a solution. And I should also note that as of this moment, we don't yet have an already elected alternate chair, because I'm the vice chair and we have, we're going to agendize at the next meeting, the election of a permanent chair and vice chair. But there's no alternate as of today to me. Therefore, at Director Ford's suggestion, we have this item to elect a temporary chair. I will first need to take public comments on the item in just a moment, if there is any. But I will say that I did reach out before the meeting to Commissioner Brian Mitchell just to make sure that he would be willing and able to serve as chair if nominated and elected. And I reached out to Brian simply because he is the longest-serving commissioner after Allen and myself, so it seemed logical to reach out to him. With that said, and I hope that makes sense, I just want to open this item for public comments and start by seeing if there's anyone in the room, which unfortunately I cannot see. But is there anyone present in the room who would like to make a comment on this item only? We will, we will in a moment come to the normal public comment on items not on the agenda and so forth.
There's nobody in the room.
No one, no one on this, in the room commenting on this. Okay. And I will also ask, if that's the case, is there anyone on Zoom wishing to comment on this particular item, the election of a temporary chair?
There's no hands.
Okay. I see no hands. So seeing none, I will turn it over to the commission, the rest of you, and I'm hoping we can take care of this item fairly quickly, appoint that person as chair for the night, and then move on to the rest of the agenda.
If I could, Chair, the thing that you need to do is get a nomination and a second, and then conduct a vote for the chair pro tempore.
Great. Well, just in the, for the sake of expediency, I would suggest that one of you nominate Brian as chair for tonight, since I think he's willing to perform that role and is ready to do it. If I could.
I'll nominate Brian.
Thank you so much. And is there a second? Thank you both very much. We have a nomination, we have a motion and a second to nominate, to nominate Commissioner Brian Mitchell as chair for this evening's meeting. Trip, may we have a roll call vote on that motion?
Allen Bongio?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes, and I would like to ask a question after.
Straight to Mike.
And Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
And Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we, the motion carries unanimously, and with that, as of this moment, Commissioner Brian Mitchell becomes the chair.
I have a question on this item.
Okay.
Thank you. It seems recently, including today, that there's been several decisions that are discussed or being made. And I understand due to the Brown Act that not everyone can be involved for discussions and decisions that are made outside of this room, unless it's officially, you know, noticed and all of that. But a lot of us, myself included, have been arriving to meetings having no idea what's going on. So I'm just wondering why, well, one, why there was no election today and why it was removed from the agenda?
It was taken off the agenda today because there were going to be people absent and felt that it would be better to have the vice chair here to have that election.
If I may just say, I also had no part in that decision, no knowledge that it, yeah. I was not even aware that it was on the agenda, it was removed from the agenda. I didn't know that it had been agendized yet for this meeting. Sorry about that.
I think we have everyone present today.
Well, it's not on the agenda, so we can't take action on it. So I'm going to go ahead and close this discussion if there are no other questions.
Ask them to be on the agenda next time since you're still on the floor.
Yeah. Will it be agendized? Were you planning on agendizing it, or whoever seems to be making the decisions?
Yes, it will be agendized.
Okay. Thank you.
Perfect. Okay. It's time for, oh, Thomas?
I just wanted to make a clarifying point, even to request an item on the agenda. I still don't see anywhere that we could request future agenda items, so.
I apologize for that. That will get put on the agenda next time.
Thank you.
We were assured that it would be on this week.
The slot for the chair or the new business?
New business.
I thought I was like to put the new business on the agenda. New business?
We need a place for new business, so if we want to ask for a topic to be in the future. Thank you, Melanie. Any other comments on this agenda item?
Not on this agenda item.
Okay.
I do have a question on it before we leave. So it was, so it'll be on the agenda next week, but is this to, to have a chair and a vice chair to fill out this term, which would be till, I believe, January 20th? I may be wrong on the date. Or is this to pick a new chair and vice chair for going into the new year? I mean, we're so close to the end of the year.
Great question. Technically, it's both. And, and so it can end up being the same people, if that's the choice of the commission, but we do need to finish out this term. But the code does call for a modi, for the elections for the coming year to be in November, for the following year. I think by practice, that is what we have done, because there's normally, or oftentimes elections, and that changes, sometimes changes the commission.
Oh, so, well, that's helpful, because that would possibly explain why it was put ahead a week, two weeks, so that it could be an actual election for the following year? That would make sense to me.
I think, well, the first order of business really is to elect a chair and vice chair to finish this year.
But it will be in November.
Right.
So if we could move on to item B, the.
Chair. Point of order, we haven't opened it up in Pledge of Allegiance or let the public know how to reach us at the outset here, how to listen or watch. Anything has?
Well, I'm trying to get to the salute to the flag. So if I could do that, I would appreciate it. We are on item B, which is the call to order, and please join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For any members of the public who are watching along and would like to participate, you can find that information on the agenda on the county's website. Trip, can you please take the role?
Thomas Mulder?
Present.
Peggy O'Neil?
Here.
Melanie McCaver?
Here.
Mike Newman?
Present.
Brian Mitchell?
Present.
Noah Levy?
Present.
And Allen Bongio?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Director, are there any agenda modifications tonight?
No modifications. There are some supplementals. There's a supplemental for item F6, G1, and F7, and, and actually, two for F7. The first three are the watershed maps. Apologize, those weren't in the original packet.
That was my fault.
The third is a revised resolution for Carlotta Gardens. There is a rather large supplemental for 12 Hawks Hill Road. That is, that item is being continued on the agenda tonight.
Thank you very much. Now is the time for public comment. At this time, people may appear before the commission on any matter pertinent to the commission's jurisdiction, and that is not on the agenda. You have three minutes to address commission from the lectern. Is anyone here who would like to speak on matters not listed on the agenda? Okay, seeing none in the chamber, I'll now go to attendees. Is there anyone who would like to speak who is on the Zoom? Okay, seeing none, I will now close public comment, and that will now bring us to our consent agenda. Consent, consent agenda or public hearing matters routine in nature usually approved by a single vote. Chair will poll the audience and members of the commission determine if any of the consent items should be pulled for public comment or further discussion. Item one is review and approval of the October 6th Planning Commission Action Summary. Are there any members of the public or commission who would like to have that polled? Okay, seeing none. That will stay on consent. Item two is the Crystal Kings Farm LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit in the Miranda area. Is there anyone?
This is continued.
Okay, thank you. That's continued. Item three, do I need to read the name if it's continued?
You can just read the name and identify this continued on the face of the agenda.
Okay. Salmon Creek Farms LLC in the Salmon Creek area also continued. The Gek Muller Coastal Development Permit in the Lolita area is continued to a date uncertain. Number five is the Tristan Oates Conditional Use Permit in the Garberville area. Is there anyone who would like to have that one pulled? Okay, we have item five pulled by a commissioner, so that will be pulled and considered separately. Item six is the Crisp Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit in the Willow Creek area. Is there anyone who would like to have that item pulled and considered separately? Anyone in the audience or in the Zoom? Okay, so seeing none, that one will stay on consent. That brings us now to item eight, the Nickerson Minor Subdivision in the McKinneyville area.
Sorry, Chair. If I could, we should be on number seven, which is Carlotta Gardens?
Got it. Seven, Carlotta Gardens in the Carlotta area. Is there anyone who would like to have that one pulled and considered separately? I don't see anyone on the Zoom, no one in the public, and no commissioners, so that will stay on consent as well. Item eight, the Nickerson Minor Subdivision in the McKinneyville area. Is there anyone who would like to have that one pulled and considered separately? Any commissioners? There's nobody on the Zoom and no one in the public, so that one will stay on consent. So that means that items one, one, two, three, four, six, seven, and eight will all be on the consent calendar. I entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar excluding number five.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent calendar. And a second by Commissioner Mulder. So Trip, would you like to call the roll for that one, please?
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Allen Bongio?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
And Mike Newman?
Yes.
Chair, I just wanted to make sure that we did allow for the opportunity for public dis, I mean, I don't see anyone present, but just making sure we did allow the opportunity for public comment on consent calendar.
Yeah, that's what we do by.
That's the, the practice of asking people to, if they want to talk about it. Just to be clear, this is a little different than the Board of Supervisors. Board of Supervisors, not all the items are public hearings. Planning Commission, all items are public hearings. That's why each one gives the public the opportunity to pull things off consent.
I'm good.
Okay. So item number five, the Tristan Oates Conditional Use Permit in the Garberville area. Mike, would you like a staff report to go along with this one?
I don't need a staff report on it. I just have a question regarding the provocation area is over the 10% that we've been approving in the recommendation, I believe, if I'm reading it correct.
2,500 of 25,000, or am I?
Because the project description got deleted down from 22,000 originally to 21,560 because of the, the previous approved grow of 22,000, so to keep it in the, the one acre area. But we're also approving then the provocation, or I should say nursery area. It's saying 2,200 square feet there, and if we're talking about 10% of what we've been doing in the past, I would hesitate to deviate off of that from what we have been doing, even if it is just a small little deviation there from the 2,200 to 21,560.
Yeah, through the chair, the, I'm trying to find the specific condition of approval right now, but there is a condition in the staff report that identifies the requirement for the applicant to submit a revised site plan showing the 21,4560 square feet. And I think it would be appropriate, if that's not in there, to add an additional requirement in that condition of approval to also revise the proposed nursery so that it is 10%.
And that would be satisfactory to me.
Are there any other questions for staff on this item? Okay. Are there any members of the public? Looks like we have one commenter from the public, public 7108. I recognize you.
I had a few questions, and hopefully these 12 greenhouses aren't going to end up on the ridges or bridges around here getting covered. They're, I don't know, can let them blight. But, so this is going to be, in your description, 22,000 square feet of new mixed light, and they said it's all going to be solar, and I guess that's going to include the, something in the water. And, yeah, well, I hope it can all be solar, because that's, you know, from March to October. We'll see. Okay, just one bit add back to the mix. Oh, and I didn't see, I was looking through the road assessment. I don't know which attachment that's in. I'd like to see that. Thank you.
It's found the conditions. Where are they? Is it legal? Oh, you have a file? Okay, while staff is looking into that, I'd like to recognize Stephen Liu to give his public comment.
Hello, this is Stephen Liu. I am the agent for the applicant, so I just want to let everyone know I'm available to answer any specific questions. The, with respect to the solar, it's, it's going to be low intensity lighting if it's used at all. Given current market, market conditions, it's not really worth the, the extra labor to be pulling tarp. So, you know, under current market conditions, the applicant is most likely going to just do a single run planting in August, or early, or late July, early August, and just letting the natural light cycle transition to plants and make them flower. So it's, it's intended to be a very low intensity, low impact project. The water is coming from rain catchment, no, no proposed generators, and then the rain catchment analysis was done for the rain catchment pond based on drought conditions. So very conservative assumptions were utilized, and I'm available to answer any specific questions if, if necessary. The road system, you know, the access road system to the site crosses a few other farms that were permitted under the 1.0 ordinance, and they have their 1,600, you know, so the road improvements have pretty much been done. Portions of the access road that were steeper have been paved, and so the road system is being brought up to, to correct standards. But if there are any further questions, I'm available. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Looks like we have David Mack, one of the panelists.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. David Mack, Harrison Associates, who was the consultant that prepared this in response to the road evaluation. There was a road evaluation report form dated May 6th, 2021, that determined that all the roads are category four, and no further review for the road network was required. I can share my screen if the commissioner would like to see that, but I did want to bring that to your attention. That is in the project file.
I think at the commission's preference, there's two things not in your attachments tonight. One is the road evaluation, and Mr. Mack can go through that with you and show it on the screen. Secondly, is the conditions of approval. And so we can walk through those, and you can look at those, or we can continue this tonight.
What does everybody think? That sounds like a lot of, a lot of information that we, you know, don't have the time to go through at our own pace, so.
I would recommend, then, that you continue this to the meeting of November 3rd.
Are there any objections to that?
Can I speak, Chair?
You're recognized.
So in reading this, this is adjacent to an existing approved farm that had 22,000 square feet, so the road evaluation, I was not as concerned about. Conditions of approval, I feel that we could see those on the screen and read through those and see if those, if we had any concerns. I think the, the reason it was pulled off consent was immature plant, so to make sure that there's a condition of approval that says for the immature plant area to be 10% of the approved cultivation area, I would be okay with looking that on the screen. I would just ask that you would close public comment before we have the consultant put it up on the screen. But that's, I'm one of seven tonight.
So I, just not to be argumentative, but since the conditions of approval technically weren't available to the public before this, you've got to give the public the opportunity to comment on the conditions.
I agree. So then.
I, that's what I was going to say, is we should go ahead and put the conditions of approval up so the public can purview them along with us. We've got the long version in here, but the conditions of approval would be satisfactory to me to go ahead right now so that we don't have to move this to another meeting.
No, I think, well, how I understood the director's comments were, we need to have that available for the public to review in advance of the meeting and not have them.
We could present it tonight. We can walk through it tonight. And, and because most, many of them are standard conditions, we can point out the ones that are unique to this. It's really the commission's discretion, pleasure, what would your preference be? If you'd prefer not to go through the conditions tonight, we can continue it. If you want to go through the conditions tonight, we're happy to do that. I apologize that the conditions are a vital part of the permit approval. We're not attached.
What do you two think?
I don't feel entirely comfortable that the public wasn't given all of the documents as well as us, but at the same time, I'm going to presume that the people who were interested in this project and may have wished to have seen those may be with us tonight. And so I, I would be okay with going over the roads assessment and the conditions of approval with staff on the screen and then reopening the public comment.
And what's your rationale for closing the public comment? After so much information will be presented?
The director clarified, all that I was trying to ask is close the public comment on the, I guess, but it would have to be, you know, he clarified that you would have to give them another bite at the apple if there's new information, so. I've just seen, in past, I've seen like information presented, and then all of a sudden you're in two hours of public comment, but what the director said, I withdraw my ask for closing. Okay.
So go ahead and walk us through the road evaluation report and conditions of approval, please.
Mr. Mack, do you have the road evaluation?
I do. It should be showing up shortly. It's one page. Let me know that you can see it, but it's very simply one page. Box one is checked, that states the entire road segment is developed to category four road standards, 20 feet wide or better. If checked, then the road is adequate for the proposed use without further review by the applicant. Public Works did not have any comments and I believe accepted this, and that is the extent of the road evaluation.
Can, Dave, can you enlarge that so that people can read it?
Ah, sure. And just for the record, this, this evaluates Dean Creek Road, which the project accesses from, and I believe Dean Creek Road intersects Highway 101, and I can, I think I have an aerial that shows that if needed. But that was what was in the file, and again, that was received and accepted May 6th, 2021 by Humboldt County Cannabis Services.
Mr. Mack, could you show the map of where this is at so you can see the road network?
Absolutely. Give me one second. Let's see here. So this is, let me just share this. This was on the PowerPoint. I'm assuming you can see that now. So this is the main highway, Dean Creek Road. I cut it off a little bit. Access is here. Access is here, comes through the site, and comes into the property. The cultivation area is here, and the drainage pond is there, and because we had questions about that, this is again Dean Creek Road coming through the aerial, comes into the site, and then there's a dirt farm road on this parcel, drainage pond and cultivation area here. And I only mention that because the public commenter asked if the cultivation was on slopes, and it is not.
Okay, any questions on this from any commissioner? Alan?
Do you know the length of the road? I couldn't read the form that was up there. I, so, it was what? 2.1. 2.1 on the.
It was 2.1.
Okay, thank you.
2.1 miles, correct.
Melanie?
Thank you. I have a comment regarding the showing of this, and not just this, but everything on Granicus. So I often put on the Granicus video on my own laptop so that I can follow along with the staff report, so I can see, see things closer, as we just saw, it's often far away even with glasses. And I noticed there, there's a delay, and I've been meaning to bring it up before, but, you know, I was just reminded of it now. There's a fairly significant lag between what's happening here in the room and what's being displayed on Granicus, and it really concerns me because when we open everything up, for example, for public comment, you know, I don't think we're waiting long enough to compensate for this lag. And it's a huge concern in terms of public participation.
Chair, is it about 30 seconds?
It, it looks like more to me. I could time it, but I would say more. I mean, by the time, for example, just now, he was showing the, you know, the blown up or closer view, we were still way back on the faraway view on Granicus.
So I understand that. As a member of the public that follows a lot of public meetings that utilize the same room, Zoom and the phone seems to be fairly live. The Granicus is delayed, but you can actually participate for commenting through that site, so it's just something to keep in mind.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just concerned that other people might be following along on the Granicus, you know, video, and they already know what number to dial. Yeah, it's, it's still kind of a concern. I don't know if it can be fixed or not, but it would be great if that could be looked into.
Just offer, it is not a situation that is unique to the planning commission. One of the things you'll see the chair of the board do is to repeatedly remind people that if they're calling in and they want to speak to, as Mr. Commissioner Mulder identified, is to listen on their phone because that's immediate, and then to hit star six. So it's probably important to remember that. That's a good reminder that there is that lag, and to give people the opportunity to get their hands up.
Thank you. I, I think that would be, I don't think we've ever done that, so maybe it would be a good idea going forward to announce it at every meeting.
Okay. Any other questions on the road evaluation report? Okay, can we go ahead and go through the conditions of approval, please? David Mack, would you prefer if I do that? I have those easily accessible right here.
Yeah, if you have them accessible, that would be easier. I don't have them pulled up right now.
Okay, so what I'm sharing with you right now is the attachment to the resolution that unfortunately wasn't on the agenda. I'm hoping that that was presented in your staff report packets that were sent to you. But just walking through this, most of these are standard conditions that apply, that we recommend for every project that comes before the planning commission, and so I just am going to kind of scroll down and focus on the ones that are specific to this The condition of approval number seven, this is somewhat standard, but it is specific to this one as well, which is to have the, an acceptable site suitability report for onsite waste treatment system to support the proposed staffing and to ensure that they are meeting the health department standards, or to provide portable toilets that meet those standards, and provide an invoice to show that that has been met. That is a fairly standard one, but it does relate to this, this project specifically as well. Condition of approval number eight is to meet the monitoring requirements of the Water Resources Protection Plan that was prepared for the property. Condition of approval number nine is to follow and implement the recommendations and improvements in the lake or stream bed alteration agreement that is approved by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Condition of approval number 10 is to implement the inadvertent discovery protocol relative to cultural resources if those are found during development of the project site. Condition of approval number 11 is to drain the irrigation ponds at the end of each growing season in order to avoid the recruitment of American bullfrog. Condition number 12 is to contact the Redway Fire Department and provide any agreement that available emergency response is available to the, to the project site, and any proposed mitigation measures by the fire department, or to record a notice of acknowledgement of no available emergency response and fire suppression services for the parcel, because this is outside of the mapped fire protection district area. And then, condition of approval number 15, and I'll try to just zoom in on this, this is relative to the cultivation area, because the application itself was for 22,000 square feet of additional, new cultivation on a site that already has an existing approved site operation of 22,000 square feet. And under the cannabis ordinance, the property can only accommodate and be approved for 43,560 square feet or one acre of cannabis. So the condition was to submit a revised site plan reflecting the approval of the additional 21,560 square feet of the new mixed light cannabis cultivation. And what you see here in the underline is what I just added at the suggestion of Commissioner Newman, to also reflect on that site plan, no more than 2,156 square feet of propagation area, which would be 10% of that. So on B1, it talks about a generator, which it says in, further up, that there is no generator being proposed. Is that just standard language? Can we strike generator from there? Sure. What I might suggest, and this is standard language, so that when you get into B, those are typical things that just are there to notify the applicant, or at that point, the permuty of the requirements of the ordinance, but it may be easy to just strike that completely and say, no generator use is authorized by this permit.
Well, it also has something about the greenhouse fans and other operational activities and equipment for not resulting in the harassment of the northern spotted owl. I would be more comfortable leaving that standard part in.
Could we add if permitted? To remind the applicant that they still need permits, and this somehow doesn't allow them to use a generator as long as these seemingly alternative conditions are met?
So what I have here might hopefully address that, which is that the combined noise from a background generator, if permitted, as well as any greenhouse fans or other operational activities and equipment, must not result in harassment of northern spotted owl species, and then continues to implement that actual decibel threshold. And then what I'll do is I'll just continue to kind of scroll down here, but again, these, with the conditions in B are typical conditions. There is none within this that are specific to this project site and that were added that are not usually included in the conditions that come in front of the commission. Commissioner Mulder?
Through the chair, can you scroll back to two and just cover B2 so that way we can address that? I think that's the one that does the light leak, just to address that one public comment.
Sure thing. So again, this is something that's basically informing the applicant of the county code requirement, but it is that should the Humboldt County Planning Division receive complaints that the lighting or noise is not complying with the standards listed above in item B1, which we just talked about, within 10 working days of receiving written notification that a complaint has been filed, the applicant shall submit written verification that the lights shielding and alignment and noise levels have been repaired, inspected, and corrected as necessary. I'll just continue to kind of scroll down slowly, just point out anything that you'd like me to address.
Can I ask you a question? Is there anybody on the phone that cannot see this going on there? I'm just asking the chair that's monitoring.
No, his screen is being shared with.
But I'm talking about people on phones only that cannot see what we're.
There actually is somebody, probably two people on the phone, that unless they're watching on Granicus, they're not seeing this.
Okay. And we'll give those people an opportunity to ask questions again at the end.
Great.
Alan?
Could you go back to, I think it was seven, but I, I'm not sure. It was the one about the Redway Fire Department. I believe it was seven or eight.
Yeah, if, if you don't mind, I'm almost all the way through. I'll kind of scroll down, and then we'll go back to that one.
That'd be great.
So we're at, yeah, the page five here, and this is, we'll just kind of. Before he just, wait, wait till he gets through. And again, basically, these are operational conditions that really are there more than anything else to give the applicant basically a packet of what the ordinance already requires so that they have something that they can easily refer to. Okay, so we've got Alan and Thomas. Okay, so I'm going to go back up to number seven regarding the fire districts. Was it number 12? Yeah.
Number 12 is the Redway Fire. Was it tw-? I don't remember which number.
A-12.
A-12. I'm sorry, it was 12. Okay. So I guess it caught my attention when we went by it the first time, and I have concerns that we're saying, after we permit this, if we were to permit it, we're saying you go to the Redway Fire Department and, and work out whatever mitigation measures they want done. Isn't it usually the other way around? You get those done before you get the approval? That you go and you get the mitigation measures and the, and whatever they're requiring? I mean.
Well, yeah, through, through the chair, one of the things that we do, we do refer this to the nearest fire district or fire department and seek to implement any conditions that they may have or any suggestions. However, what this condition does is implement a general plan standard, which is that any commercial project that is outside of an actual fire protection district boundary, this is basically almost word for word what that says, that they need to either follow, you know, provide written notification and work out those mitigation measures, or record a notice of no available emergency response. And our experience is that more likely than not, we will not get a response from the fire district, and that they will need to record that notice of no available emergency response. And that comes out of the general plan. Okay. Thomas?
Two things, I'm just going to piggyback on Commissioner Bonzio's comment. I know many a people that I actually have yet to run into a farmer that has gotten the first part of the fire department, because usually the fire departments aren't wanting to take on that added risk without funding tied to it, so they ask everyone to record that, but then they say, you know, if there is a fire, we'll be there, we just don't want to be on. That's been my experience from farmers I talk to. But the second part, I wanted to clarify for those on the phone and those from section B on down, from all the projects I believe I've read, those seem to be exactly the same conditions of approval that are in almost all the cannabis projects. Is that correct or incorrect?
That is correct. Yes, we really try to make, and there are standard conditions in section A, but A is really the ones that we try to, to apply specifically to address issues that we see in the project during the review of the project. And again, B is really more intended to provide some notification to the, the permuty of what the ordinance already requires.
Thank you for that. And then through the chair, so my feeling is, when we went through those, we read through the site-specific ones in A, and then the B, the B section is, that we scrolled through, they were on the screen, but then, you know, they're standard, so I'm good.
So I want to give the attendees who were on the phone and may not have been able to.
Is your mic on?
I wanted to give the public participants who may have been on the phone call, it says right now there's one phone call listener. If there's anything you couldn't see, but you heard us discussing, if you'd like to ask questions, I'll reopen up public comment so that you can ask questions of things that were confusing because you couldn't see the screen. Anybody?
Stars.
Press star six to raise your hand.
Star six to unmute.
Star six to unmute. What is?
Star nine.
Star nine to raise your hand, and star six to unmute. Okay, we're getting no takers, so I will now bring it back to the commission for.
Jerry, you've got a hand up.
I have a hand up.
Yep.
Okay, public 7108.
Hi, thanks for taking my call. First, there was a lot to discuss on SWS, so I didn't pass notes on everything. The fire districts going out to all these projects and approving them, from what I heard is, they don't have time to be doing that. They don't get paid, and they're really busy dealing with fires and stuff like that. The second thing is, I hope when this gets recorded on the website or whatever, the project description is changed, so it reflects what you're saying now. And the process, I have my computer screen on and the telephone, I can hear you talking about one thing, what's going on on the computer is, you know, not happening anywhere close to when you're talking, so trying. to when you're talking, so trying to listen to what's being said and looking at the computer. And so that's not really working out too good for the public. Well, that's...
All right, thank you, Bonnie. Any other comments? Okay, I will now close public comment and bring it back to the commission for deliberation and potential action.
Chair, I'd like to move the recommended conditions as they were presented with the changes to A15 and to B1, if I, I'm looking over to make sure those are the correct ones that we amended.
Those are the ones, correct. That took care of the propagation area square footage?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Trip, you're up.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Melanie McAver?
Yes.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
And Noah Levy?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously. So that brings us to the end of the consent agenda. And... Brings us to item G1. Alkami Atelier LLC, conditional use permit and special permit in the Alder Point area.
Hi, I'm Portia Salcedo, the assigned planner for this project.
Yeah, it should be on Zoom. Are you seeing it, the presentation? There you go.
This is an application for a modification to an approved conditional use permit and special permit. This is an aerial image of the location of Alkami Atelier LLC. The project is in the Alder Point area on the east side of Dyreville Loop Road, approximately 1.23 miles from the north intersection of Ross Road and Dyreville Loop Road. And then approximately 1.13 miles southeast on a private drive to the property known as 26875 Dyreville Loop Road. The applicant seeks a modification to a previously approved project, which I mentioned, to consolidate and reconfigure 13,383 square feet of existing cultivation area. The project also is going to change from full sun outdoor to light deprivation methodology. And they're also adding a, an ancillary nursery space of 1,300 square feet. So the proposed modification will not increase the existing cultivation entitlement. Drying and curing will continue to occur on site, and further processing will continue to occur at a licensed third-party processing facility. The applicant will continue to employ up to two employees during peak months. No changes are proposed for the water source or projected water, annual water use. It will remain at 1,000, or 141,120 gallons per year provided by a groundwater well. No additional changes in the cultivation operations. Employee plan or energy use have been proposed. Power continues to be provided by a 2-kilowatt generator, and no additional power is needed for the additional propagation facilities. There is no power needed for any aspect of the proposed modification. Thank you. So this project was continued from the October 6 hearing. Due to technical difficulties, it led to a couple of unanswered questions. So I was attending remotely and my computer crashed at an inopportune time. And I believe the questions posed were concerning the findings with regard to the well and CDFW comments. So I want to point to the findings. Evidence 5B refers to the ongoing condition from the already approved project that the applicant is to provide an annual report evaluating the well drawdown with pump tests. And attachment 1A of the conditions of approval under general condition number six states that the modified project shall adhere to the terms of the LSAA, which specifies that the applicant shall provide annual monitoring reports evaluating the drawdown of the well. And so up on the screen is an excerpt from the referral response from the parent project dated November 8, 2019. And I refer to the CDFW referral response under the water section of the staff report to reiterate the conditions that were to be met. The well conditions and CDFW referral comments were related to the originally reviewed and previously approved project and are carried forward as conditions for this modification. However, there are no changes that affect them related to the modification. So my apologies for any confusion by referencing the parent project. The application in front of you is tonight strictly for the modification to the type of cultivation and the reconfiguration and the addition of an ancillary nursery area. So this concludes my presentation, and myself and staff are available for any questions. Thanks.
Okay, we have a couple of questions.
Chair, first, Chair, Chair. Just like to point out one other, one other thing. The recommendation identifies that the commission should describe this as part of the consent calendar, survey the audience if no one responds. So items one through three on the recommendation should be deleted. This should begin with item four, adopt the resolution.
Okay, so I'd like to recognize Commissioner O'Neil.
My question, my question is regarding the CDF recommendation of the annual pump test. Is that an unusual request, or what would prompt them to put that request in this, this application? Because, I mean, any well might go dry, and why are they being required to do these annual pump tests, which cost money? I mean, if it goes dry, it goes dry. But, so I'm curious as to why this is in here, or is this in standard in all of them?
Sure, if I go through the chair, that's a, that's a great question. This, and again, this condition was applied to the originally approved project. There was a point in time where that was a standard recommendation from CDFW, and their concern, I believe, was that if the well goes dry, they were concerned that people would divert from any surface waters on the site without authorization. And so they wanted to see that pump test. We did have discussions with CDFW, and I think this is probably a year and a half or two years ago now, and we have not been applying that moving forward unless there are specific concerns to that well. Because as you mentioned, Commissioner O'Neil, you know, if the well goes dry, it, you know, they're going to have to take, do some modifications to their project, either completely, you know, stop cultivating, reduce the cultivation to whatever the onsite water can support, or do a modification to the project. And so we have not been applying that for probably at least the last 18 months or so.
And I don't, I think it's sort of a financial hardship on the, I mean, if it goes dry, it goes dry, and anyone at any time could do something they're not supposed to do, and they shouldn't be doing it, and that's why we, you know, do whatever inspections you do. But I don't feel like, unless there's a specific issue with this well, that they should be burdened with something that everyone else isn't burdened with.
So I'd just like to respond, we would be tempted to want to encourage removal of that condition at this time, but since that's not part of the modification, it was not advertised that way, that it's not really something that should be undone right now.
Okay. I, Commissioner Mulder?
Through the chair, just a question back to staff. Reading that condition, being as this is open hearing, could we add or remove conditions of approval to the project through this modification process, or is that not okay?
Should be very careful to limit what's added or removed to those being conditions that have a distinct nexus to what's being requested.
I hear you. And I, I want to respond to Commissioner O'Neil as well in this, like, I want to say when I was following the commission, it seemed about all of 2018 through 2019, this was like a standard CDFW response. I've seen it on tons of projects I read.
Okay, I'd now like to open it up to the public. Is there any member of the public in attendance tonight? I'll now call on public 7108.
Thank you for taking my call. I just wanted to say the location of this is not too far away from where I live. And at the last meeting, one of the commissioners asked, were there any wells in the area that went dry? And Director Ford said nothing he knew of or could remember. Well, right next door, there was a well in the plant was gonna be the water that they were gonna use, but when they got around to it, it turned out that the well became unproductive. That's the words they used. They never filed a report. I commented on it when it was getting approved. So there's that well going dry. And maybe CDF, just looking at the conditions of the creeks around here, how dry they are, maybe that was one of the things they were thinking of. Yeah, so that was my concern before, and it still is. And how many other wells in the area? I guess you only look at what's 1,000 feet away, which, you know, isn't very far in reality. I don't think, you know, impacts stop at, at 1,000 feet. Just wanted to let you know about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll now close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion and possible action.
I would find, I was, I'd be ready to make a motion to adopt the resolution. It doesn't have the number, which says the following, finds the planning commission as considered the addendum to the environmental impact report for the commercial cannabis land use ordinance, CCLUO, as described by section 15164 State Sequel Guidelines, that was prepared for the Alkami, I can't even enunciate that word. Atelier LLC project, and finds that the proposed project complies with general plan and zoning ordinance, and approves the conditional use permit and special permit modification subject to the recommended conditions of approval, and approves the cultivation operations plan and site plan, attachment 1A, 1B, and 1C, if those need to be read into the record.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, you're up, Trip.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Affirmative.
Melanie McAver?
Yes.
And Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next item will be the public hearings on the amendments to the inland zoning regulations, general plan, and coastal zoning regulations pertaining to transitional and supportive housing. But first, I'd like to take a five to 10-minute break. Thank you. Break and bring us to item I, public hearings. And the only item on here is the public hearing on amendments to the inland zoning regulations, general plan, and coastal zoning regulations pertaining to transitional and supportive housing. Staff report, please.
Good evening, commissioners, members of public. I'm Mary Melner, the planner assigned to the supportive and transitional housing amendments. This project is part of our 2019 housing element update. It amends the inland and coastal zoning regulations and a small amendment to the general plan. The purpose is to make our code reflect the same as state housing law. And the effect of the amendments, it accomplishes a couple of things. We harmonize the definitions with state law, definitions of supportive and transitional housing. We explicitly call out the permissibility in residential zones to make it clearer and easier to read the code. The proposed amendments streamline, incorporate streamlining provisions provided for in state law that apply to multifamily supportive housing projects. And there's a, an update to the general plan to correct the tables to reflect, to reflect those uses. There are two implementation measures that this carries out, HIM 51 and 61, basically saying that we need to amend inland and coastal regulations and the general plan. As always, the coastal amendments are not effective until they're certified by the Coastal Commission. The definitions of supportive and transitional housing are inconsistent in our code now. And the amendments propose these, these definitions. Supportive housing is rental housing with rent support that's targeted at a specific population that has offsite or onsite services, and there's no length, no time limit on the length of stay. Transitional housing, on the other hand, is rental housing under, under a rental assistance program with or without services, and it's offered for a period of at least six months, but there is a definite termination date, at which time the unit will be turned over to another occupant. So those changes that I just described would, if we incorporate those into our code, will make it compliant with state law and reflecting state law. There is one aspect where we are proposing to go beyond state law slightly. Basically, the essence of the state housing law says whatever is allowed in a residential zone, supportive and transitional housing, you can't imply, can't apply any further restrictions beyond what's in residential, other residential units. So the one variation is we're proposing that we actually reduce some of the restrictions on supportive housing in a few zones where residential is now allowed, and that, those zones would be C1, C2, and C3, and business parks. In the current code, there are restrictions on ground floor residential uses and the existence of a... and the existence of a commercial establishment on the same lot. What this code proposes, what this amendment proposes is that we reduce those restrictions, or remove those restrictions for supportive housing in those zones. If the commission does not think that's a good idea, there's, they can opt for alternative one, which basically goes back to the same restrictions that apply to all residential units in those zones. The purpose for the removal, removal of the restrictions is to correct the severe shortage right now of supportive housing locations. So that's, the top text there is what's written in the proposed code. And then the alternative is the more restrictive. Also, I want to note that there was, in the circulated draft that the commissioners are looking at, there's a typo in alternative one that says residential use must be located on the ground floor and should be, may not be located on the ground floor. Hopefully, that's clear. That correction is also made on the online draft, but it did not get made in the draft that was circulated in, in the commission's packets. That's pretty much it. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on this.
I'm curious if, much like when they came out with the AOB and the junior AOB and all those programs, is there going to be any kind of concessions given to put these kind of residential units in commercial settings? Because they're completely different kind of occupancies. So the separations between the businesses and the, the residential units are much different, and cost to separate those units is very high. So is there going to be any kind of, I don't know what the word, leniency on, on conditions to have, you know, some apartments mixed in with commercial buildings? I, I mean, knowing what it takes to do that, it's very expensive to mix those uses.
Are you thinking like incentives?
Well, I mean, just for instance, with AOB, they said, you know, they removed parking issues. They, you know, the number of spaces you had to have, or didn't have to add spaces for the AOB. So I'm, I'm just saying, is there going to be? ADU. ADU. I'm, I'm sorry. Why, I, sorry, I didn't mean AOB. That's just been in the. Flashbacks. Yeah. Yeah, I meant ADU and junior ADUs, so I apologize.
I could take a shot at that, Ms. Melner, if you would help me if I get this wrong. I, I think the thing that Ms. Mulder just presented was the idea that in order to encourage these, one way of doing it and allowing them to not have to have the separation between a commercial use and a residential use that I think you're, you're speaking to, is to just allow them on all floors within a commercial district. Because right now, if they were on a second floor, you'd have to have that fire separation between the first floor and the second floor. So one way of addressing that differently is to allow it on the first floor, allow them to be primary uses. That would be different than what is currently allowed in those districts where residential uses are allowed on second floors, but not on the first floor. And so that's why it was, the ordinance that's presented to you as the primary recommendation is to allow them on both floors.
That's, that's good. I understand that you're allowing them on different floors, but you're still going to have separation, occupancy separations side to side. So you're going to have firewalls between them. You know, you're going to have walls in the attic space that separates so that you couldn't go from one unit into the other. There's a, there's a large number of things that I, I don't, most people wouldn't think about it because they're not doing this, okay? And I understand that. I'm just saying, has any of that been, I didn't see anything in, in my reading. So this sounds good, but the reality is it's not going to create affordable housing. It might create a little bit more, but it's not going to be what we always like to throw out there as affordable, so I.
Well, this really is not even intended to be housing in the traditional sense. You're right. Let me go back. One of the things you're addressing right now is building code, though, not land use?
Yeah, that's true.
And, and so the, the building code is not being affected by this particular action tonight. The one thing that the staff recommendation does is that it would allow a lot, not in a commercial center like you're speaking to, but if there's a commercial lot and somebody were to build something for transitional or supportive housing, they could build it according to a residential standard. But you're right, if you're putting it in a commercial building where there's commercial uses on both sides, then the building code would, would dictate what the fire separation is. And, and so I think what we're trying to do here is just simply to create more opportunity. And, and hopefully, that will result in a higher number of these facilities being constructed. Transitional supportive housing is not long-term housing. For people, it's really just what it says. It's supportive housing for people who are in a transitional state and transitional housing to have people move from really being in supportive housing to being in permanent housing. And there's a limited period of time in between there.
I'd like to call on Commissioner O'Neil.
So there's a difference between low-income housing and supportive housing. And so if someone comes in and says, I want to build supportive housing next door to me, let's say, and I'm going to move in all these people and convert what's there to, you know, build more rooms and what have you. But what guarantees that they continue to provide supportive housing as opposed to low-income housing? Because supportive housing, you're providing supportive services. You might be coming in and drug testing the people. You're helping them find jobs, you know, that's supportive housing. But if they use this just to build the houses and then they walk away and all the neighbors have to deal with the problems because they're not providing supportive housing, they're just providing low-income housing, going out and getting vouchers from the county, and they're making money, but they're not really providing services. So how do you guarantee that that's going to happen? And what is it that the state is requiring us to do at the minimum? I mean, are, you know, I have that question. And the other question I have with commercial use is the burden, I don't think it would be fair to put the burden on in, commercial use as it is right now. Like, let's say I have a factory and I'm making cannabis. I don't know what I'm doing, but there could be, you know, some danger if you put houses right next door to my business. Is the burden on the housing that's coming in to make any kind of changes that might not need to be made to make it so that low-income or supportive housing can cohabitate with a commercial business? I understand if you're putting them maybe in a motel, which they're already doing now. Those are commercial sites that are being converted into supportive housing or low-income housing. But if you start putting them in, you know, industrial zones, who's responsible there to make sure that it's a safe location? So those are just some of my questions. My first one is the supportive versus low-income. Like, how are you going to guarantee that they're going to continue to get these supportive services?
I can answer that through the chair. Supportive housing is never allowed where low-income housing is not already allowed. So in a residential zone is where all these things are allowed. So essentially, if someone discontinued a supportive housing and did something else with that, as long as it's zoned for residential, it wouldn't matter. In other words, there's no special allowance being made for supportive and transitional housing. And to, to go to your second part of that question, what the state law requires at minimum is for transitional housing and supportive housing, no additional restrictions or performance standards are required beyond what would be required in the, in any other residential unit in that zone. Does that make sense? So we're not really applying this to any zones where residential is not already allowed. And this, what the state says is supportive and transitional housing are residential uses, period, full stop.
And there's no, there's no requirement that you provide supportive services? You can just say that when you apply and then you don't have to do it afterwards, right?
Why would you? Because, but what would be the advantage of saying it was supportive if it wasn't? I mean, normally, these things are grant-funded and you're, whoever is paying the bill is, has a whole slew of requirements that have to be followed for supportive housing. So it would be hard to say you're supportive housing unless, you see what I'm saying?
Well, I, I do know a little bit about this subject, and there's a difference between just building houses that you can go out and get housing vouchers for low-income people versus a true supportive housing program where you're, you know, like Arcade House Partnership, where they're actually, and they're working with their clients to, to, you know, to build them up so maybe someday they can live in, you know, on their own, maybe buy a home someday. But they're working with them as opposed to just, here's your key.
I wanted to recognize, first Alan, then Melanie.
If I could, could I help try to answer Commissioner O'Neil's question that she's raising?
Go right ahead.
I, I think the, the thing that Ms. Melner was trying to say is that the housing's going to be constructed to be in conformance with the residential standard. And as you are aware, there are different styles of construction, sometimes between transitional housing and, and resi, and low-income residential. But the bottom line is, our response is simply that if they cease the transitional housing aspect of it, it still has to be designed and be able to function as a residential use to then be transitioned into a low-income housing. And, and, and so there, there's still those zoning requirements, even though there's not a discretionary permit involved. If they were to make that transition and not install the appropriate improvements that need to be made to allow it to be a fully functioning residential unit, then that would be a violation of the zoning ordinance.
Okay, Commissioner Bongio?
So I see the need for this type of housing, but I also have a concern that we, and I, and I, I say in our county, because that's the only county that I've really watched this in, but I have seen it in some of the surrounding counties, are so concerned with meeting housing elements and that kind of thing that have to do with residential, that I think that we're not looking at what the potential damage could be to our commercial land base, industry, light industrial land base, that we have so little of that's zoned that way. So to have small numbers on that and then go and start taking over some of that to make more housing, I think in the long run, we may be causing problems for the county. We don't usually look that much at the, at those properties as we do residential. So I think that's something that should be weighed out in this.
So if I could just explain, the, some rationale here is that what's being proposed is that these supportive transitional housing opportunities would only exist where residential is already allowed. The one change, the one change that's being made is proposing that this type of residential use can be allowed on the first floor. And that's why the alternative was presented by Ms. Melner, that if we went to what, just precisely where residential is allowed and limited it to that, then it would not be allowed on the first floor of commercial zones or the business park zone. We're not talking about industrial zones. So this is just a situation where, where residential is currently allowed. That's where it's being proposed to, to be allowed, and, and that's consistent with state law. The one, the decision point for the commission relative to that tonight is whether or not you want to expand that to be on the first floor in commercial zones or limit it to where residential is currently limited to.
Commissioner McAver?
Thank you, yes. I understand that, you know, this is coming from the, the state, and I'm in support of including these two types of housing in the definition of residential, you know, applicable to this change that we're looking at tonight. And further, I also support allowing it on the ground floor, simply because there are many different types of commercial activities and commercial businesses. And sometimes, for example, in Old Town, you might have something on the second or third floor, you know, for the view. There are many examples in Old Town and many other cities where you have the commercial activities on the upper floors. And it would make more sense in those particular cases and on those streets or in those buildings to have the residential component be on the ground floor. In some cases, I, I think it would be a really bad idea to have the residential units on the ground floor. But, you know, that, that's not something that we can really evaluate in advance. I think that we should have the potential to have residences be on the ground floor because there are many examples where it simply makes sense. And I don't think that any building owner is going to inappropriately place residences on the ground floor when that doesn't make sense.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes, thanks, Chair. My question is, we're talking about county here, and do we have a layout showing where these possible zones, the C1, 2, 3, and, and the other one, could mostly be? I would think maybe in McKinleyville, but I'm trying to find out where most of those might be that we're talking about here.
So McKinleyville Central Avenue certainly is a good example of that. I would say that along Myrtle, going out through, towards the fairgrounds would be another local example of that. Garberville would be an example of that. Other areas where there are commercial zones or business park zones, Redway would be an example of that.
And, and this zone, as I have heard before, I, I'm in support of trying to expand as much as we can. And I would be in support of allowing it on the ground floor. But these are basically, the commercial zones are like offices and very light stuff. It's not something that would be hazardous next door to the residential units that are put in. Is that correct?
That's largely true, yes, because they're C1, C2, C3 business park zones.
Yeah, which are mainly offices and retail, but not re, is retail involved in this, too?
Retail is certainly allowed in commercial zones, yes.
Yes, okay. All right, that answers my questions right there. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions before I open it up to public comment? Okay, are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission for deliberation and action. Commissioner Mulder?
So I'm hearing from a building perspective where it'd be beneficial to have on the ground floor, but then also, I'm trying to think from a business perspective, too, if too many of, not properly operated, I guess you would say, these type of housing units could really bring down, like, a business park's ability to have functioning businesses. So I have a little bit of hesitation and concern to allow it on the ground floor. Because what if they just come in and they build a single-story, basically, house right next to businesses and don't utilize? businesses and don't utilize, I don't know. So I just have hesitation, but I'm willing to go whatever way the commission wants to go.
I think I'd like to say from my perspective that the supportive housing should be allowed to be anywhere housing is already allowed, but no further at this time.
So in other words, Commissioner Mitchell, you're talking about abiding by the state law, having that into our plans and not further expanding into the ground floor.
At this time, yes. We have a periodic process whereby we evaluate our policies to see what's hindering affordable housing. And the next time we do that, we can look and see if this is something that we think could really provide more, then maybe that's what we'll analyze. But for now, I feel like what Commissioner Mulder said, I agree with, and that's where I'm comfortable this time.
So Mary, what was the public's input on this? Didn't we have some meetings and public input, not on this particular exact subject, but on transitional and supportive housing within the past two years, if I remember correctly? Maybe three?
We did have some during housing element, our housing element discussions. And at that time, as I remember it, that's one of the places where it came up, the suggestion to have supportive housing on the ground floor in commercial districts. It was brought up, I think, by someone in Redway, saying that would really help them be able to get some of this supportive housing down there. There was no public comment on this particular set of amendments at this time, but we have over the last few, we've had some public meetings on housing in general and on housing and on supportive housing back a few months ago. And at that time also, they were, you know, an express need for the supportive housing to be available. There's a shortage of housing in general, and it's particularly dire for supportive housing. That's what I remember.
Thank you. And being on the housing, the Humboldt Housing and Homeless Coalition Executive Board, I hear it a lot more through that with some of the nonprofits that are looking for additional housing. And that's why I'm in support of having the first floor available in this expansion from what the state is requiring us to have already.
Okay. I want to go ahead and recognize Commissioner O'Neill at this time.
I'm kind of going both ways because I can tell you, there's funding through the state and there are some people that are going to aggressively try to buy whatever property they can to take advantage, and that might be good or bad. But I think that that could create a very disjointed community. What I would rather see is that, you know, it's nice to have walking communities that are within commercial districts and so that, you know, you don't have all these cars driving from somewhere else. But I think it needs to be well-planned, like you could have an island of, an area that was well-designed for housing, but if you just say anybody can have anything, you know, that they can afford to buy with, you know, and I can tell you, there's funding out there. You can get millions of dollars worth of funding to do this. And so if it's not controlled or if there's not a limit, like you say, no more than a certain percentage, you're going to lose your commercial properties. And you need, people need jobs too. They can't just live in supportive housing and not work. So, I mean, it's nice if they can walk to work and their houses are close by and there's like these islands of affordable housing within, you know, or close to commercial districts. But if you just say anything's open, I'll tell you what, I'm driving around all the time looking where you might be able to put housing. So that's what other people are going to be doing also. And so I think you need to do it in a well-planned way. And I don't know, you know, I mean, that's going to take an effort. So, you know, that's just my two cents.
All right. Commissioner Mulder?
So this is a tough one for me because I do hear both sides of it. I do live in Southern Humboldt and I do see a lot of people that probably could benefit from transitional housing and other types of housing. So it's really, really tough. And I just remembered a conversation my wife had with me, she's on the chamber down there, was talking about some sort of housing thing coming up. So would it be possible to maybe allow, I guess this question's through the chair to staff, would it be possible to put in that housing could be allowed on the ground floor through like a special permit or some sort of, I can't think, discretionary permit? So that way, if it was not well-thought-out, or is that trying to put in too many regulations and try to oversee too much?
I believe, and Ms. Milner, correct me if I'm wrong, but given the fact that that would be more liberal than what the state requires, that that would be allowable.
Thank you.
Commissioner Levy?
Thank you. Well, I think like a lot of you, I'm really torn two ways on this. And I, for that reason, like Commissioner Mulder's suggestion just now. Seems like it opens the door to the possibility of adding more transitional supportive housing. It curtails or protects against some of the concerns that it would happen willy-nilly with unforeseen side effects. So in short, I like Thomas's suggestion.
Any further discussion or would you like to make that a motion?
Which alternative is that though? Because I'm...
I think it's sort of half and half. And I support that too, that if you are going to do on the ground floor, that maybe you have to have an additional, you know, permit that comes to the planning commission. I don't know how you want to, you know, develop it, but that, you know, it's well-thought-out and it's not taking away from other uses or incompatible uses.
Commissioner Levy, is your hand still up?
Sorry, I will lower it.
Okay.
Through the chair, could I ask staff for a good verbiage for adding condition of approval or some language there, please?
Yeah, can you please assist us in with the...
So it would be really pretty simple to just follow the recommendation of the, in the staff report with the modification to require a special permit for transitional supportive housing on the first floor in commercial and office zones or office park zones.
Okay.
Could we use ground floor?
Sure.
I would make that my motion, as the director just stated.
Okay. We have a motion?
I'll second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Trip, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Alan Bonjo? No. Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neill?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
So the motion carries 6-1. And I believe that's the end of our agenda for the evening.
Brown Act.
Training.
Ah, yes. Item J, Brown Act Training.
I'm Dusty Andrews. I'm your deputy county counsel. I'm sure you've seen me around. And now I'm get to talk something I'm passionate about, which is one of the many acts we get to comply with, which is the Ralph M. Brown Act.
Trip, could we get, there you go.
Okay, so starting out with this, this is the intent. The Brown Act is codified in California Government Code, Section 54950 and beyond that. The stated legislative intent is that the Brown Act is to ensure local government bodies conduct the people's business openly and that the government exists and operates in trust for the people of the county. So the government doesn't own any part of the county, the people own the county. This is an important provision, not only because it starts out the Brown Act, but since 1953, the legislative intent has never been amended and almost every single part of the Brown Act since then has been amended. So it's the pinnacle, it's the bone on which the Brown Act rests. So the Brown Act applies only in two situations, when there is a meeting and with local legislative bodies to be defined. So legislative bodies are governing bodies. It includes newly elected members. If there is an appointed member who has not yet taken seat, it would apply to them. It applies to appointed bodies, standing committees, and even certain private organizations. Pursuant to Humboldt County Code, Section 312-1.3, the planning commission is a legislative appointed body, and so it is a legislative body pursuant to the Brown Act. So it's easy to look at what is a legislative body, which the planning commission is, and also what is not a legislative body. So temporary advisory committees are not, individual planning commissioners are not legislative bodies, and staff and employees of the government are not legislative bodies. So this is a conjunctive. So a meeting is any congregation of a majority of members, and the majority is very important to highlight here, especially when we talk about serial meetings later on, at the same time and location, including teleconference locations, that here discuss and deliberate on any item that is within the subject matter jurisdiction. And so you do not need action for there to be a meeting. It just needs to have a majority, which would be, you know, quorum of the members. So then there's meeting exceptions. Like I said, what is a meeting, what is not a meeting, individual contacts. So if your constituent base contacts you, you're allowed to talk to them. If you contact a single member, that may not be, but as I said, we will discuss later about the prospect of serial meetings. If the majority of members attend a social or ceremonial event, different conferences, and they do not discuss business, or if they contend other legislative body, agency, committee meetings, if they attend as observers. So I really want to focus on serial meetings because I think that's where the Brown Act gets most confusing, because this is a development of concurrent actions. So a majority of members cannot develop a concurrence as to an action in business through serial meetings, intermediaries, subterfuge, and communication. So this could be why we recommend you don't reply all or you do not forward, which can create a chain meeting. I really would like to talk about two different types of serial meetings. The first one is called a daisy chain. In this hypothetical, a daisy chain, member A would contact member B of the commission, member B would then contact member C, and then member C would contact member D. And at that point, you've created a quorum, even though member A, you guys aren't meeting at one place at one time, and that creates an illegal meeting. The second situation would be what's called the hub-and-spoke situation. And in that situation, member A talks to member B, member A talks to member C, member A talks to member D all separately, but they're still talking to a majority of the members, and you're still creating a quorum, a majority, and you would create an illegal meeting that way. There's a third situation, which is where you use maybe staff or employees to try and pass off, like maybe member A asks someone on the planning staff to say to member B, tell them this is my ideas on this. And then they're using an intermediate in the staff to talk to different members, even though they're not contacting them directly, which can also create either a hub-and-spoke or daisy chain effect and creates serial meetings. So that's why it's important, even though as a commissioner, you may not, you may individually contact a different commissioner to talk, you may not know that that commissioner is going to talk to someone else, and that commissioner is going to talk to someone else, and then now you guys have created an illegal meeting on a subject. So going on to the other meeting requirements, for a very, very long time, members of the legislative body had to be in the county, usually in person, but in at least the physical territory of the bounty for a very long time. And teleconference meetings were only permitted in certain situations. As we know, COVID really changed that for us with the passage of AB 361, which allowed local agencies to meet via teleconferences and on a hybrid model without the traditional posting of physical addresses for different commissioners during a proclaimed state of an emergency. There are different amendments in the law on the horizon to allow this in the future, even when there's not a state of an emergency. So this is looking at the agenda requirements. This is physically what needs to be on the agenda. So the legislative body cannot take an action or have discussion on items not posted on the agenda. The agendas themselves need to have a brief description of each item. Closed session items must be listed, and there must be a time for public comment on all of these. The agenda also must be posted 72 hours in advance, 24 hours a day. Ours are usually posted up front in multiple different locations, also electronically on the web. And they have to have the site of the meeting and teleconference location as well as mailing. So if something is not agendized, these are the discussion exceptions. You're allowed to respond if it's not agendized. If you're responding to a statement made as a question and public comment, you're allowed to make referrals to the staff to agendize something for the next time. If there's emergency situations, this would be something like a disaster of some sort. The two-thirds situation, the two-thirds situation is at least two-thirds of the body is present, and there's an immediate action that came to the attention after the agenda was posted. This would be something like if the county doesn't pass this resolution by today, we're going to lose $150,000 in grant funding and like we need to meet this deadline. Very, very seldom exception. And certain adjourned items that have already been discussed about, you're allowed to bring back up. And all materials that are submitted to us are publicly displayed. So in Humboldt, the planning staff so kindly attaches all of the submitted material to certain agendas or is distributed afterwards. You can look on, I think it's Granicus at Lexus, and see everything that has been submitted to the commissions. So like I said at the beginning, the pinnacle part of the Brown Act is not only attendance by the public and transparency with the public, but also the participation of the public. So the public has the right to address the legislative body on each and every item. This has to be allowed if it's on particular items and not the at-large comment before any deliberation or in consideration of the item. They have the right to speak on non-agenda items. It's important to note that this should only be on matters within that particular legislative body's subject matter jurisdiction. And then during special meetings, that public comment can be limited only to what's on the agenda. In addition, the legislative body can impose reasonable limits on public testimony, as we've seen here before. You can put time limits maybe on public comment if we know that there's going to be a lot, and so on. So this is just rules of order. The chair has the power to maintain the order at the meeting. This includes curtailing any maybe disruptive public. And our Humboldt County Planning Commission, we And our Humboldt County Planning Commission, we operate using the Roberts Rules of Order. So closed session items, these are items that we would talk about behind scenes. It includes litigation, real estate negotiation, public employment, grand jury, public security, and so on. Closed sessions are relatively unlikely for the planning commission, although not without reason. So getting on into the penalties, you can have both criminal and civil penalties. You can either get a misdemeanor. The misdemeanor has a mens rea attached to it, which is the idea that a certain legislative body member is acting with wrongful intent, that they're intending to deprive the public of information, which they know that they have, the public is entitled to know under the Brown Act. Or if they're willfully attending a meeting they know is not public as it should be. Civil remedies include injunction, mandamus, arraignment of mandamus, and declaratory relief. In certain situations, the court can declare an action void if a action was made that violated the Brown Act. If it's not cured later through a legal meeting. In addition, it should be noted that the county would be on the line potentially for certain challenger's attorney's fees if this is what it was brought to. And here are some additional resources, the Ralph M. Brown Act itself, as well as open to the public. This is a really favorite guide of mine. The big, big ones are, can get lofty, but I think this one's about 40 pages and it has a lot of nice information in it that you can flip to and turn to at any time. Questions?
So you said not to reply all on emails? Can you just say it one more time?
Please don't reply all and refrain from forwarding if you can.
You had a question regarding speaking to, you know, commissioner to commissioner to commissioner, you know, talking about the daisy chain effect. So to remedy that, how is that remedied?
The hope is that we don't do it to begin with. Let's start out with that preface.
Another commissioner.
A possible way maybe to cure it would be to come in and broadcast it and disclaim everything that you spoke about. Share if it was maybe through text message or email, those discussions and make it available to the public. So then the public could participate in those, in those different conversations that they weren't maybe privy to when they should have been.
Commissioner O'Neal, do you have a question?
Yeah, just, it was kind of, you did a good job at saying what you couldn't do. And mine kind of goes to a little bit of what was just discussed is what can you do? You know, like you can't go out to lunch with somebody that's on the commission and talk about something because you don't know that they might talk with somebody else, but, so you can't do that. And you can't come in before a meeting and have a discussion with somebody that's sitting next to you about something because that's not allowed either, right? I always thought with the Brown Act, as long as you didn't have more than two people, you were okay, or three people or something like that. But it doesn't sound like that's the case.
If you have an individual conversation with a fellow commissioner, that is not immediately going to violate the Brown Act. You run the risk, however, if you go to lunch of that commissioner maybe talking to a different commissioner about the same subject and sharing your thoughts on it. So then the other commissioner would know exactly what you're thinking. And then at that point, you're not making decisions and deliberations in front of the public. You're making decisions that have already almost been pre-made. And so
But that wouldn't be me. That would be the second party that went to talk to somebody else. Would I be in violation too, or would they be in violation because they're the ones that went to, to another person?
The legislative body is in violation, not maybe commissioners individually. When a violation occurs by the Brown Act, unless it's wrongful, if a commissioner is acting wrongfully individually, they know they're violating, then that, that person could be liable. But if they're doing it accidentally, then it's the commission at large that's violating, not the individual person.
So Commissioner Mulder?
So through the chair, I just had a couple of questions. I wanted to clarify that I've, I don't know how I put it. So the way I would, the trainings I've been to, I could, for example, I could talk to Commissioner Newman about, let's say, housing. And then I could talk to and ask him, hey, don't tell anyone what I'm telling you about housing, keep this between us. Then I could contact Commissioner Mitchell and talk about fishing and then ask him not to share it. And then Commissioner Bongio and talk to him about construction, ask him not to share anything. And, one, two, three, there's, there's four of us there. But as long as we are talking about different subjects and requested that the information not be shared, we would not be in violation of the Brown Act. Is that correct?
If you're talking about different subjects and it's not one item for deliberation, you would not be in violation. Asking them not to share is really nice, but maybe they'll share even though you don't ask them. And that's sort of a risk you're going to have to take with who you decide to speak with.
The reason, through the chair, thank you for that. The reason I was saying that is because in a class that I took, if you're asking that, it, it helps alleviate your violation of the Brown Act if they do share that information into a serial meeting. And then, yeah, so thank you.
Through the chair, I think if you were to say, please don't share, that would go to the mens rea element, that you're not intentionally and willfully trying to violate the Browns Act.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, appreciate the presentation. And with that, we are adjourned.